I'll call the meeting to order. It's an exciting beginning of the new year when we find out that the RCMP detachment building might out for tender, so that's posted up. There's a buzz around that people are comparing their bids and whatnot, so. Many nonbelievers out there, it's actually gonna happen, so. It's really exciting, so that's good, so overall, really pleased to see that progress going on. It's a nice way to start the new year, knowing that that's in order. Our, uh, called the meeting in order, and the first item of business is conflict of interest or community interest, any items on today's agenda that give rise to any conflicts? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. We have the agenda before you, is there any addition? Any care to move the agenda as presented, Councilor White moves their agenda as presented, all favor? That's carried. Then we have three point one, regular council meeting minutes of January fourteenth nineteen. Errors or omissions? Councilor Pauls?
I love we dropped the minutes at rest.
Councilor Pauls moves them minutes as speculated, any discussion? All favor? And then we have item three point two, the special council meeting minutes of January fourteenth. Any errors or omissions? Councilor Chapman?
On motion zero nineteen point nineteen, it'd be referred to as Councilor Simpson, move that council give authorization.
All right.
All movement minutes, or the, as the manager.
Any discussion? We have Councilor Chapman's motion with the minutes for the special council meeting, all favor? That's carried. Okay, and then we have line four point one, Spencer.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'll keep the comments brief as I believe the item is fairly self-explanatory. Essentially, what we're looking at is a more detailed version of the public engagement framework that was presented as part of the public, the project management plan for the town plan review and rewrite back in October. So essentially, the process has been split into four steps, each step relating to a step in the overall review and rewrite of the MDP itself, or what we term the town plan. These tools and techniques and process overall align with the IAP two tools and techniques that we've been adopting or have adopted as part of our public participation policy last year, so it does meet with the town's requirements for a new policy. One thing that I failed to put in here was the desire to formalize a working group for the town plan review. It would generally be made up of twenty-two members of council, members of the planning commission, and the subdivision and development field board, and a number of spots available for interested members of the community to sit on as well. So if that is something the council would be willing to consider, we could make the call for nominations up to the community as soon as approval were to be given by council, if that's the wish of council. Timothée, I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have on the item forty.
Thank you, Spencer. Are there any questions through the administration on this item? Councilor Chapman?
Thank you. Thank you, worship. As you maybe, could we scroll down to the stakeholders part? That would be page eleven of seventeen. I appreciate the fact that you're including the senior, you're looking at senior planners, including those from the, from ORSC. And you have Hillary Jansen and Steve Parry, are you considering the advisor from ORSC to the town as well on there?
Yes, who'd be included on line three under Project Heat? That would be the town of Coleville, planning commission staff on behalf of the town.
So that person isn't named particularly at this point?
It's fine, but it wouldn't be named just for sake of gravity on the document.
And I have one more, just more of a. I can't remember where it went now. It was under, under, so it'd be page fifteen of seventeen. And it was just a wording change where you have under the, two, four, five, under tools and technicians, under the first, in the first box, you have graffiti walls. Is there a possibility you could reword that to make, to mean something else?
If I may, Mr. Chair, can I ask why? Counselor, go ahead.
Graffiti to me, to me, just alludes something that's more loose and seems to, I know I'm just very protective of our community, and graffiti is not really something I approve of, so it might be a different, if you could use a different word for that, it might help me.
Mr. Chair, I certainly can, this is a colloquialism that's used commonly in the planning world, but if it's something that's off-putting, I can use that.
Doesn't that, it's not a deal breaker for me, but I just thought it might be something we can reuse a different terminology for.
So Spencer, where were you in to start the working group? And I think that's a good idea, so just the way that we put that in the process or the mechanism to follow with that idea?
Thank you for the question, Mayor. Essentially, referring back to page fifteen and seventeen, I would agree to initiate that working group almost immediately. Likely, the survey could go ahead of a working group, but after that, it would be formalized, and hopefully by that time, we would have some initial feedback to start more detailed discussion with that working group. And they would carry on through to the end of the process, basically working in a, any review and advisory capacity from the perspective of the members that are on that group. Just doing a few quick, very basic calculations as we were speaking, and it looks like kind of a sweet spot for that to have a purpose, anywhere from ten to fifteen total. So if we looked at two spots for two members of council that may have an interest in sitting on that group, we'd have two spots for the public members from the planning commission, two spots for public members from the subdivision and development field board, which would leave six spots open for general community members if they were interested in applying.
And that working group, the terms of reference would be the, or be a focus group of bringing, would they be presented with ideas, or would they be generating ideas for the town plan? What kind of work would that, what do you do?
Certainly, generally, the way a working group would be used in this context is both sides of the coin in terms of feedback and the provided items for review. So essentially, a productive dialogue that would be based on feedback from the engagement process and staff presenting technical information to them for consideration. Now, the guidance by groups such as a working group isn't typically binding, but it is helpful and generally is considered in the overall process when looking at a broad spectrum project such as a town plan review.
So that'd be more consultative, consultative, you're, you're an IAP kind of framework, or?
Yes, that's right.
That's just my thought, I'd like to add a working group with a much more council than those that are not.
I'll make a motion, that's the number one, but to put them in action for the working group.
Can I give you an introduction then, of the working group now?
Yes.
You'll bring back recommendations of that council, or you'll advertise the spots?
Yeah, definitely. Thank you, Mayor.
The Councilor Simpson, excuse me, has made a motion and recommendation number one, amended to reflect the inclusion of a working group, as discussed. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all favor? And that's carried unanimously, thank you. Here, Mr. Chair. And then we have three point one.
Call for, as we presented, basically, this is just a kind of an information, on the Coleville one hundred celebrations, so you've got everything there in your package. The first thing we wanted to just ask council is, we've had, we're extremely fortunate, we, we put out to the community to submit Centennial logos for 2019, and I was thrilled to see that we did receive seven submissions for the Centennial logo. So the committee, it's been, it's been a hard decision, but the committee has decided that they'd like to proceed with number two, in your handouts there. And basically, we were just sharing that with you to, and just asking your opinion on that, to see if we were on the right track, so.
Any, any members of council, have any questions through Cindy? Councilor Pauls?
Thank you, Mary. Are you going to use all three different backgrounds?
No, so I hope they're in the right order, so the second logo, it's the brown and orange one, that's the one that we're recommending that we use for the Centennial. Is that what chairs? That one there?
Yeah.
That one?
Yeah.
That's it?
Yeah.
What about all these ones at the very top?
So the committee has looked at all of them, and actually, we had a meeting again last week, and this is the one that we decided that we would like to see, and that's why we're just bringing it to council.
I guess you should sell the committee.
Well, you know, just, it is council's prerogative to accept the recommendation of the committee or not, you know, that's, just want to be clear, that's, any of our town committees are more to inform council and to lie there, but it's not, not mandatory.
So we haven't contacted anybody yet, the winner or anything, so there could potentially be some modifications to it as well, but that's, that's the one that the committee likes.
I think, speaking, if I can relay some of the feedback from the committee, to give a little clarity, the submissions, the top three submissions there were the ones that were seriously considered the most, and of the top three, the middle, that middle one there that's shown on the screen was more, felt to be more marketable, you know, it could be adapted to working with a little bit better than perhaps the bottom one that was not made in the element to it, and may you replicate that in marketing materials, it's hard to do that justice kind of thing, so. And the same for number one, so remember, that middle one seemed to be more easily local to be manipulated and truly workable, whereas if you have the different birds and all that on, or fine detail, it doesn't necessarily translate well to when you put it on signs and mugs and T-shirts, you know, because it's a little bit cheaper, music kind of thing. That was the rationale for going, I mean, they were all, all three had, you know, many, many good characteristics and whatnot, but the, the middle one seemed to be the one that was easier to manipulate and put on marketing materials. Just bring some in dialogue from the committee to the council. Councilor Chapman?
Yeah, thank you, worship. Mayor, with these submissions and the choice that was, the final choice that was made, is that, that one logo, is that going to be kind of property of the town, you know, or is that going to be something that?
No, I believe that in our, when we put out for submissions, it does become the property of the town.
Correct.
Any other questions, or the ambitious list of activities that I want to, on behalf of the town council, commend the community for all the different work that you're contemplating and that, it's, I think, right now, we're in a situation where we kind of have family fest coming up in February, several days, but so more time for the community, you know, be dedicated, maybe to talking more about the Heritage Day and natural December twenty-seventh celebration and that, so there's more events and discussion to be had. The community is working hard and entertaining many, many thoughts and ideas, and the only negative, you know, there's always a constraint about how much money you need to spread around, right? So we had a million dollar grant from the federal, and that was just a really heck of a party that we don't have now.
So yeah, so that was the other portion of this, is just if I just wanted to invite council, if you did have any thoughts or ideas for different celebrations throughout the year, we'd love to hear from you as well, and to get back to the committee, the working group, and see what we could do with them, so that was, that was, I guess, the final note on that, we welcome any suggestions as well.
Thank you, Cindy. So I guess the basic takeaway is you want some decision on item number one?
Yes.
Councilor Chapman?
Thank you, worship. I'll make the motion that council approved the number one, that council approved the recommendation to working group for the Centennial, we have a feedback, the number two, we recommend.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Chapman, that I think you probably could just have a period after Centennial logo, we don't need, we already, we don't need, have provided feedback in there. All right, any discussion? Call the question, all favor? And, okay, and anybody opposed? Lana, DC would work and get some, I'm not sure if you were. Yeah, I think, I think we have unanimous present on that one, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And then I don't think Lana has to really present in front of us on the Coleville Family Fund Run, there is a thousand dollars dedicated in budget for this event, just to answer, please. Potential question on that matter, if there was not, but. Councilor White?
Yes, thank you, worship. I have a question regarding where the funding is actually going, I think up until now, it's probably gone to the playground, is the money still going to the playground, or where is the major portion of the money going to?
Lana?
Sorry, I don't have a mic, but in their correspondence, in previous correspondence, they were specific to the playground, but this one just says to support local community enhancements, that's all it said. It was not specific to the playground, so I don't know that.
Well, I think the report is quite positive, it had a huge improvement in their attendance year over year last year, and the group is working hard to make that a very good, solid community event, so they, they've proven to be pretty good stewards of their funding already with the monies, that most of the money goes to that playground, which is situated on Town of Coleville property, and so it's, I don't, I'm pretty supportive of their endeavors to make this an annual event and keep their success going. Councilor Chapman?
Yeah, thank you, worship. Just another thought that occurs to me, and that is with Coleville's one hundred anniversary, it might be helpful to work together on, on marketing that side of the two in this family fund run, so for the thousand dollars under the platinum portion, that there's a personalized banner for your business. So could we contribute that logo that we've just approved into that banner somehow? And obviously, it'll be meaning of that, meaning logo on that T-shirts, net reforms, and the logo on event website banners and posters, so I'm not too sure if that's something that Cindy or you could work, work with Colleen on that, on that idea, if we go with the platinum, which is the one thousand dollar portion. And I suppose that our fire department and, so are people going to be participating in that too?
Why are you looking at me?
Because we're going to win, right?
Yeah. Yes, we are going to put a team in the fire department, I think we combine our teams.
So Councilor Chapman, is your?
I'll make the motion to number one, that council approved the sponsorship to be held this year on, for the amount of the thousand dollars.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Chapman, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all favor? That's carried unanimously, thank you. And we have eight point one. Cindy, welcome.
So I submitted my staff, or my solid waste year review, I focused on the last ten months, because that's how long it's been since we started organics. So in there, I put in some of the, I guess, trends that were set for the three streams, some of the challenges that we had throughout the, basically, the last ten months. And you can see that our tipping fees have raised once again by ten dollars a ton at the Leffler's landfill, and there's still about half the cost for organics, which are our heaviest material. And then I provided a chart just showing our tonnage for the three streams throughout the ten months. Recycling stays pretty steady throughout the whole year. Garbage is fairly consistent, and consistent year to year also on what it stays at. And May was our biggest month for organics, with all the spring cleanup that people were doing, and has dropped off in the colder months.
Thank you, Cindy. Is there any next questions through to administration, by council? Councilor Chapman?
Thank you, worship. Cindy, I'm just looking at this graph here, and I'm very impressed by the composting that has really shown some real success. And my curiosity, even though we, recycling kind of staying the same, that our garbage is, is actually gone up to some degree, is that, like, are those numbers lower than previous years in garbage, or?
Yes.
How can we compare those red numbers to?
Our garbage is lower than previous years, so if you took the garbage and composting and added them together, we're almost on the same line for garbage in 2017. So we are seeing pretty consistent with those numbers, we're not going up a lot, just those numbers are being transferred over to organics.
Any additional questions? Those are done, and I consider a motion received this report with very information with, thanks, the administration would prepare it. Councilor Simpson moves it for information, any discussion? All favor? Thank you, Cindy. I've generated a report on their new meetings. There's an interesting meeting, had some interesting items there, but. What can I need? Just like, may I have to do protections? Any questions of council on anything there? Councilor Simpson?
So is this something that we could look into, applying program for them too, as the town?
Yes, yep.
So it's like how we go forward with this? Spencer would take over that one, or?
Or see any others being left?
So can I make a motion to look into it further?
Which one, the?
The electric vehicle charging station, so.
Kevin?
Yeah, that would be fine, I can be the quarterback and hand off the ball or pass it, we'll have to just have a look, but I think there's a lot of intrigue here. Been working with the county, we're already looking at the protein supercluster one, so. There's a lot of options in this green, green realm, so I think we can definitely turn that rock over, and Cam would be the, the lead being in charge of grants.
Does that mean something to bring in people, just having an electric vehicle line over there, I probably wouldn't stop previously, I'd stop now, so I know it's a big thing nowadays, especially in Alberta.
Well, and it's, you know, Councilor Chapman and I were at the meeting, and it's interesting to see, you know, the map of DC and all the different stations that they have, and Alberta's quite devoid of it. The neat thing is that, like PV marks that have gone on board with, people with electric cars can plug in there, but there, it's a very kind of a low-grade plugin, and a person would have to be parked at the PV mark for five or six hours to do anything worthwhile there, whereas this DC FC charger, you'd only have to be parked there for one to two hours, I don't know. You know, there are a lot of different businesses that are coming on board, but these are the chargers that make it worthwhile for the people to stop there. So then, Councilor Simpson is making a motion to ask the administration to look forward to possibilities on the electronics charging stations. Um, any discussion, Councilor Pauls?
Yeah, thank you, worship, but I don't want us to limit the investigation to getting to the charging station. Remember that, I did a big announcement in the paper and stuff just the other day, that Raymond is now a net zero for electrical energy for their town, because of putting up a lot of solar panels and a lot of other things, and I agree, Sterling is the same thing. So I'm assuming that this two hundred million dollars that's available would be available to that type of infrastructure also. So if we're going to investigate it, I'd like to make sure that we look into everything, that charging stations are good, but it really affects a very, at the present time, a very small percentage of our citizens, where possibly a net zero energy to the town would affect over eight thousand residents, so let's make sure we don't limit our investigation just to the charging station, thank you.
So you consider that friendly to include an exploration of the green options presented within the report, then?
It's a great idea.
Okay, so we have Councilor Simpson's motion to direct the administration to explore the green options that are presented in, within the report. Councilor Chapman?
Just, I'll, I'll move up to your report, if you want to carry that motion.
All right. The Councilor Simpson's motion, any further discussion? All in favor? And then we have Councilor Chapman, which is to move the report for information, all in favor?
Just in addition to, to your report, Worship, the Peaks to Prairies also spoke that morning to the Highway Three Clean Development Association, and it agrees very unanimously, plus I think this Community Energy Association is working with the current government to work on these, on these station concepts.
All right, and then we have information items eleven, two, and three. I would say that, like, with the Order of Excellence, typically, council doesn't like to get involved with actual selection candidates, but I would hope, can we direct the administration to put that out on our social media platform, and call for citizens to nominate their policies in the area if they feel moved? And then I'd also like administration maybe to, with all the good work that the council's doing, is maybe come out with recommendations on how to make applications for the municipal parish minister excellence awards as well. I think we probably chuck off a number of boxes on a couple of our initiatives, especially with Pelisser and our partnership with them on the fire safety curriculum, so.
And our poetry.
I don't think we really need a motion necessarily for either of those. Does anybody care to take up any one of those information items, or move all three for information?
Move all three for information.
Councilor Pauls moved all three for information. Any discussion? Any final call the question, all in favor? That's carried unanimously, thank you. Bringing us to the end of the public items. Motion is going to the closed session. Councilor Pauls, all in favor? Closed session, thank you.